Okay, let's get started. It's five thirty. So I'm going to call this special board of selectmen meeting. Quarter at five thirty P M. At the table, we have a selectman Jim Lampos, selectman Jim John Meesham and First Selectwoman and the Shoemaker. Just a couple of information items this afternoon. Lined out this morning, they sent out a press release, but the Big Y Shopping Plaza has been purchased. And it's a trio of companies, but so I don't. It's Selco Properties in Development, Grossman Development Group and the McDevitt Group. But I do want you to know that they have done their due diligence. They have been here at Town Hall for the past, I would say, five to six months, coming in, getting information, talking to people. And I just really appreciate the way they went about it. They spent a great deal amount of time talking to the tenants there and learning more about our community. And so I think they're going to be a great addition for Old Line. Let's see. C W P M seemed to have a problem with some an oil leak of some sort, transmission oil or a gate lubricant. And it spread here at Town Hall. It spread on Long Street, Ferry Street and Sandpiper as well. And they have been contacted and they're going to, and pictures have been sent and they will be in contact with us as to a remedy. Next week, we will sign, vote to sign our connectivity grant for the Halls Road sidewalk project. I'm going to have a brief meeting this week with our town engineers just to pull all together our stuff and start to look and see what types of things we're going to need. And then, of course, tomorrow night, we have a meeting. This is a meeting where basically the moderator leads the meeting. There will be some time for discussion. However, the discussion doesn't really lead to a change in the vote because at the end of this meeting, moderator just moves the vote to a referendum, which will be held on December sixteenth. And as you know, we don't really have the opportunity to address public comment in those types of meetings. But you can, are welcome to make any type of public comment that you want. And go from there. I understand you received some concerns about some forestry activity on Flat Rock.
Yes.
And that is being addressed tomorrow by not only our zoning, but also the state forestry.
Excellent.
They're coming to see things happen. Anybody else have any information or anything?
Do not.
No, just the, the concerns of Flat Rock that was it was presented to Inland Wetlands as selective harvesting and it just seems like it's more than selective at this point, so.
Or it's very selective.
I did contact Eric and said, asked him if he could take a look at that. So I'm glad we'll start turning on that.
He'll be out there tomorrow. He was going to do a drive by. And then the state forestry person called him and said, I've been getting phone calls. So he was going to come as well.
Good.
All right. And okay, so we need to try to finish our meeting today, people, by six thirty and then by the crowd, I think we might be able to do this. So we're going to start with our meeting minutes. We have our regular meeting of no.
Public comments.
Sorry, public comment, public comment, sorry. Anyone, you're on the agenda, so you, you have no public comment. Okay. So we have a couple of people online that if you have anything to say, I'll take eight, six, oh, seven, nine, four, seven, four, eight, four.
Uh, I think that's me. This is Mary Daly.
Hi, Mary.
Thank you. Hey, I just wanted to. Yes, you can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to say that late Friday, we received an under agenda for a special W P C A meeting. And one seems to be recosting the E D U, which we already voted on twice now. In October, the entire W P C A voted to accept H R T's E D U values with a five percent contingency of twenty-two forty-one. And that went forward for the referendum. In November, after that, we learned that the Forest Main Bioxide bid had collapsed and was rebid one point two million higher. The pump station bid had collapsed and was rebid with a new, with a new bidder, Altisar, but that expired also November seventeenth, and there was now a request for an escalation. That Frank Noe had requested compensation that Deave had determined a six percent contingency versus five. So the cost went up since the referendum had, had been published. All of these factors imply that the project costs, including the E D U, had increased since H R T completed their analysis in September. But then during November, on November eighteenth, another special W P C A meeting, Chairman Tsunami stated that the New London and East Line connection fees were in fact capital expenses. And the entire W P C A board agreed and voted to include the East Line and New London connection fees as a factor in the E D U. Then November twenty-fourth second, the Connecticut Examiner printed Chairman's statement that one E D U was three thousand one hundred dollars per year or sixty-two thousand. Two days later, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finances, based on that information, went forward and voted to move the sewer project to referendum. Fine. Absentee voting and early voting started the day after. On December third, after early voting had started, the Connecticut Examiner printed Chairman Tsunami's statement that one E D U was now thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty or nineteen thirty-nine. This change was not discussed at a W P C A meeting, nor has it been justified. On the agenda for tomorrow's special meeting is the following. Discussion of allocation costs per E D U into connection fees and betterment assessment fees. Motion and vote on allocation of hookup fee and betterment fees. We already voted on these items before the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, voted to move this project to referendum. Calling a special meeting for tomorrow appears to be just a tactic now. A latent attempt to overturn the, and refute the Board of Selectmen's posted referendum details, which potentially will confuse and influence the outcome of an active referendum. I ask that the Board of Selectmen put a stop to this. I respectfully ask that the Board of Selectmen to cancel tomorrow's W P C A meeting and halt further public comments on this until the Board of Selectmen can obtain a legal opinion clarifying if the referendum has already been so severely compromised, it cannot legally continue. Thank you.
Mary, will you send me your comments so we can attach them, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yep. Is there anyone else online that would like to offer public comment? Carolyn, Bill, nothing? Carolyn, we're glad you're home. Carolyn Miranda's back with us in town after being hospitalized for a while. Good to have you back, Carolyn. And Mary, please mute yourself because I know you're, okay, great. Thanks. Okay. So hearing no further public comment, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. And does anyone have any changes to the November seventeenth Regular Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes?
I was not a member yet, so I'll understand.
Okay.
I do not.
I do not either. Chen, would you like to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the November seventeenth for a selectmen meeting minutes as written.
Okay, I will second. All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to our special meeting on the Board of Selectmen of November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept the meeting, the meeting minutes for the special Board of Selectmen meeting, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I will second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion, any changes, edits, anything that you say?
I saw none.
Thank you, Chen. Um, okay. So hearing no further edits, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the November twenty-fourth right, Special Board of Selectmen, Regular Board of Selectmen meeting, right? Was right, no, special, special, sorry. Uh, at five P M., please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes. Moving on. First thing under new business is the Duck River Garden Club request, and Mary Ellen Basham is here to share with us. Come on up.
Okay, so these are for you. I don't know what you guys have already read about this, but these are just.
I sent some.
Okay, so this is like a little bit more formal. Um, this one is for the Historical Society, like if we need to pass information on so that they have one.
Okay. John Noise. I'm just going to switch my mic around so you can have it.
Can I say?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so Mary Ellen Basham here on behalf of the Duck River Garden Club, and we are asking the town to if we can install Blue Star and Gold Star Memorial Markers in the front of Town Hall. Um, by the tree right over here. We've kind of looked at it completely blank. Um, we looked at two sites. We looked at a lot of different sites. But the two that we've chosen are in front of Town Hall, which fits the history of, you know, Town Hall and, and what these markers signify. And then we also looked at Celine. But Celine, it's open, it's great. Um, there's just like a lot of mismatched history there, I feel like. So um, initially, we liked the openness of it. It was very visible, but there's like the witness stones there, the horse trough, the tavern seating, the postal marker, there's just like a lot of different things. And we just came back to Memorial Town Hall. So we'd love the permission to do this. And if we are granted the permission, we have to go through the Historical Society to also get their permission. Um, and we're sort of on a time crunch because and you'll see this, I think, on like the very last page of this. We can probably just go through this really quickly. Um, it's just going to be a little purpose, uh, the background history of this program, which has been around a very long time. Um, I'd also like to add that the, the Gold Star Memorial plaque, there's only two other towns in Connecticut that actually have it. A lot of people have the Blue Star, but there's only two other towns that have the Gold Star. So we would be one of the three towns in the entire state of Connecticut that would have it. Um, and this is sort of a rationale for why we want it here. We're requesting approval. It made a like a very quick checklist, so I could kind of stay on track of what we kind of need from the board to expedite this. And on the very last page, you'll see why we're, we're kind of working through this quickly is because at the end of the year, the prices are, these are going to go up. Um, I guess they have been continuously for the last couple of years. Um, and we obviously don't want to pay more money for them. If this was March, it would be a different story. We'd have tons of time. And then also, we want to have these in place before the two hundred and fiftieth Celebration of America for Old Line because it will probably be one of the events that we'll have here. So they take, they can take up to twenty-six weeks to make. Um, but they try to get them done. If you give them a date when we file the application, when we give them a date, they typically have it weeks before so that we can install and stuff. So um, that's why we're trying to get this done before the end of December. Um, so I don't know. And here, I'll send you, actually, I printed these out today. These are the ones that are over in Old Stabbrook. If you want to kind of get like a better idea of what these really look like. Um, they're pretty magnificent and.
Do you have measurements?
I do. So they are roughly seven feet, six inches tall. And that's with a three, uh, three feet underground post, um, and the width is three feet, nine inches. So I, that's just a rough estimate. Um, and then because I have the application for the historical society, like it's all here and that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm a hundred percent.
Okay.
Whatever spot we're supposed to.
Um, so I actually did talk to Martha about this a little bit, just kind of like off the cuff and John too. And I, I sent some pictures around of ultimately what we really wanted. And, um, if we have it in front of Town Hall, we probably would scale it down quite considerably just because we could put something very small there, like a little garden. We personally wanted a dogwood tree to be in the background because that's what they, um, used before they came out with the memorial plaques. They would plant dogwood trees along the highway and that was, that was a memorial highway. But with the, the conifer tree back there, I think that just would make a great backdrop. And we could add some color to the bottom of it. Um, not much, but there's a lot going on here too, and I don't really want to take away from that either. So um, on page, I think on page two, you guys have sort of an idea of what it would look like. And that's from, did you guys not get the pictures on there?
I have one picture on page two.
Is it page two? Okay. Do you know how one more page?
I have.
Okay, sorry. So that's just a general idea of what would look best. That's actually the backdrop of the tree and you can see the fence at, um, Town Hall parking lot. And then they cut the sidewalk out of there. So that's kind of an idea of what it would look like. Um, and I, I guess we're asking, you know, going through my checklist, like are you on board with bringing the Blue and Gold Star Memorial Markers to the town of Old Line?
I'm, I'm certainly on board with, with the project.
Okay.
Um, I understand the time that, you know, the, the concern for timeliness. Well, as you said, there's, there's, you know, some possible locations other than here. Somehow this didn't work out. Is there any, do we know if there, is there any kind of utilities or anything that would be obstructive to installing the signs in that location that we're aware of?
We can do a call before you dig.
Yeah, we, we would have.
We would have to do that.
These are pretty sizable and they're, they're cast, correct? So they're
Yeah.
heavy, so they would require a pretty significant uh, foundation. So I, I'm, you know, that tree is getting pretty big, so I don't know how big that tree is going to get. And that was one thought that I had. And so I think it's interesting that you mentioned dogwoods because uh, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to replacing that tree with something that would be a little more size appropriate.
So anything on town property that is a tree
Yep.
has to go through the tree commission.
Sure.
So, yeah, and I also wrote in the tree commissions last, they changed their policy where any trees that are planted on town property have to be native. And this is actually a native tree. It's a Florida dogwood, so.
Yes, she, well, and they have a specific list of dogwoods that they would like to approve, that they approve because they've done their studies of what is hardy enough. There's a lot that are native, but they don't always hold up. So they have done a lot of research over the years as to which ones they like.
I love that, that they've done this.
Definitely, they have. They've done a lot. So I'm totally in favor of this as far as the exact installation. And I know that um, the Historic District is going to want an exact.
Design.
Well, they're, they're okay with the, they're, but they're going to want to know exactly where it's going. They're going to want it. And that's could play into, we have to do the call before you dig. I'm wondering if they could do enough that we're to say that we're working together because once they get here in the size. I'm also just thinking that's the tree that we light up at the holidays.
Yeah.
So if we block it with six feet of sign, uh, I don't know what it would look like. I'd really have to go out and stand in front and say, so if one was on, do they need to be next to each other? Could they separate?
Yeah, they could be separated a little bit. Yeah, absolutely. You could separate them a little bit. And I, they look really big, but like when you see it, it's, it's, it's not like massive.
Where are these in, in service?
They're across from the cave.
Oh, okay.
And they're right in front of the pickleball court.
Right.
I, I just noticed that these signs look pretty close to the sidewalk. Is that the concept or would it be?
It's just the way, the only.
The signs would be further back.
Yeah, they would be.
In front of it.
I went out and marked it and I think, I think I, I said like fifteen feet from the sidewalk and then there's a fifteen, oh, fourteen feet. Um, this is also, hold on. Fifteen feet from the sidewalk, fourteen feet in from this walkway, the walkway coming up. And then it like literally meets right in the middle. And so from there, we would have like our center line and it, one would sort of kind of go on each side, like kind of spread out so that there's space. And I agree with you, Martha, that tree is beautiful to light up. When I drove by the other night, I was like, oh, it looks so great. So I wasn't sure if there were going to be lights on it. Um, and I was like, oh, I think markers would look really good in front of them. So that was my perspective, but yeah, you definitely need to get a visual of it.
Um, so I will say that the fifteen feet in is a little concerning to me only because of the number of people that walk on the front lawn of Town Hall for the other historic marker that we have in front of my office.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, there are a lot of um, visitors of, um, the older generation that come. And I panic a little because when they come off a flat sidewalk onto the lawn, I've seen a few people get a little
Oh, gosh.
off balance. And I would prefer they didn't fall on Town Hall, so.
I'm happy to have them wherever, like.
I don't know how close they need to be. I know that, I know that there are some very historic towns, Manchester, Vermont, everything. Every type of those markers, whether it's a house or whatever, there's a specific setting so that it follows same suit all the way through town. And then nobody has any questions as they go through. And that's kind of what we used for the marker that's at the house down on the other green. Um, how far in it is.
Okay.
So let's, I mean, I think we could, I think if you get our general approval, we can all meet with you individually or something out there to sort of sketch something out so that you have it. And I know that the Board, uh, Historic District has offered to do a quick special meeting for you.
Oh, good.
Right? Is it, didn't you say that you'd ask them?
Well, I did ask them and they said, um, they would consider it. Yes. So, okay. I'm like, well, I'm going to go walk down and talk to Martha now. Um, so I'm hoping that they will. Um, I don't, I don't see why they would.
Well, I would say that you should at least proceed to get them because if they won't agree to put them here, we will find a place for you to put them.
Okay. Yeah, and.
That is.
I don't care where they go out there. Like I just had them set back far enough because I knew one of the, the, um, members of the Historic District Commission had said, well, it's kind of crowded out here now with the one marker and then the other. And I was like, well, I kind of get that. Uh, there's a lot. So I was like, well, I could push them back a little. Maybe it would take away from that, like overcrowdedness, I guess. But they can be front and center. They can go anywhere out there, I think. But there's a big space and I think they would look great out there.
Yeah, we can make a mark. And it's just one pole, right? One pole per sign.
Yes, one per sign. Um, and there's no specific way they have to be put in. It's not like the Federated Garden Club is saying like they have to be done exactly this way. So um.
Public Works, just put them in before. They, I mean, they'll put them in for you.
Well, yeah.
Once you have the instructions of where to go.
Okay, great. Yeah. Cause that was the other thing that I was going to ask is that like if they are approved, like we would definitely need their help with like installing them. And then also we would have to, we would ask that they be shipped to that warehouse because of the size of them, like nobody really has space for them. And at least it's sort of a safe place for them to sit until they can be installed.
Kind of good, Public Works.
Um, and I guess I should just point out too, that a lot of like the smaller details of them, like I'm happy to spend day and night going over them. But I think for us, we just want to be able to say yes. Someone to say, yes, we approve them. You can have them here and or just order them. So we can then talk about like what flowers or space or, you know, anything else. Um, but we also just need kind of a little bit of a push from the Historic District Commission too, to say like, like I'm going to keep up with this. And like we, special meeting, I think they need a public hearing. Um, and a lot of other things. So just hoping that you guys can kind of help with that too. Um.
So I would be open to hearing a motion to approve the purchase of these. And that we will finalize where they're going within the next week or two. And, but you could get the order going, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Blue and Gold Star Memorial Signs.
Second.
Okay.
Thanks.
Is there any further discussion?
I just have a little quick question. Um, and I'm sure it's, it's addressed. Uh, in the presentation that we received in our email, it had, um, Blue Star Memorial Highway signs. So it is going to be just memorial and not highway.
So it's going to look just like that, with the exception that that one says the Saber Garden Club on it, but here it says Blue Star Memorial Highway. Okay.
So I just want to make sure because ninety-five is actually the Blue Star Memorial Highway. And Google Maps, now that it's A I driven, is a disaster. So they could very well pick that up
It says memorial.
and make this the Blue Star Highway, you know, so.
So there's two different markers, actually. Sorry, I should clarify that. There is the Blue Star Memorial Highway marker, which they do go on the highway. And these ones are like sort of the secondary town ones that don't say highway on them. So no, they are not going to say.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Ninety-five is actually the Blue Star Memorial Highway.
Yes, yes.
Right.
And there was actually a marker on the ninety-five, um, for East Line. And they don't know what happened to it, uh, with the construction. It just sort of disappeared, which is sort of sad. Um, and then I just wanted to also say that, that the information that you got in the email, um, that was sort of just like for the application uh, for the Historic District Commission. So it's not very formal or anything. And just letting you know.
Mr. Good, we just, I provided it to John and Jim, just so that they would have some point of reference over the weekend to read up on.
Okay.
So, um, that's fine. Anything else?
Okay, so for the application, I think you have to sign it so I can submit it.
Yeah, but you want to noodle the, um, before the place that where
Okay.
you're going to have to do that before I sign this application because I think you have to provide them with some more specific details. I'm happy to meet up with you someday this week. And I'm, I'm sure that John or Jimmy can make some suggestions. I just, you know, we can go out with a little, um, paint and spray paint and just
Oh, thanks.
mark the, mark the, um.
Yes, whatever.
Mark it up and then they can drive by and tell us what they think.
Okay.
And we can go back and redo it. I just think that they're going to want exact spaces. And then I had to do for the marker down in um, at the end, I had to do a certificate of authenticity. I think it was the C O A, which I had to say this is the exact spot so that the marker down there can be located and people can find it through G I S.
Oh.
And that's what, so it does require an exact.
Okay.
Once it's in, not so much now, but a general idea of where it's going.
So should I, do you want me to call Dick State? Like I'm happy to call.
No, 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 Jake, Ed, Ed will do that.
Okay.
But we'll get that done before the end of the week. Just that, that, that's a little, really and truly, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
Just need to let them know.
Okay.
And we're not doing it right away. So they'll alert us. They're not going to tell us like within a day. They usually come out in forty-eight hours to check.
Okay.
And can tell us if anything's.
Okay, that's great. Um, thank you.
We might also have something in building plans that.
Oh, yeah.
I can ask Eric Olson to look at.
Okay. Um, all right. Thank you very much.
So we just need a most, so the motion was to, what was it again? Jen, Jen, you want to read that back to us again?
To authorize the purchase of.
Can we amend the agenda to also say that I can sign the certificate for application for the Historic District when it's ready?
amend the, uh, the motion.
The motion, amend the motion, yes.
I, I would make a motion to amend the motion on, on the floor to say that we, Board of Selectmen authorizes the purchase of the sign and the first select woman to sign the application.
And you.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so let's now vote on this. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes.
Thank you, Father.
You're welcome.
All right, Mother. So should I just reach out to you and then?
I'm just not here tomorrow, but if you want to reject me Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we can find the times.
Yeah, I know it's a busy.
Just make sure that the temperatures are above nineteen.
I'll make sure. And I'm available.
I'll wear my coffee coat. I'll wear my property coat.
Thank you, alright, alright.
Thanks, Mary Ellen, thanks for doing all the work. Okay, so the next one is a discussion, and I'm just gonna put it out there, we were, um, Suzanne Thompson. Um, has had some phone calls when, um. There are local vendors who do work for the town in various places and modes, and then Suzanne has gotten a phone call from. Constituents who have a tendency to check the tax records and say, I don't understand why this vendor. Is working for the town when they owe you money in taxes and you haven't collected it. And there is no way, you, you cannot legally say, oh, yeah, you can do this job, we'll take. We'll pay you ten thousand, but then you owe us ten thousand, you can't keep it, we can't hold on to it. Um, in lieu of payment, so it becomes problematic. And Suzanne said, is there a way that we could create a policy? Um, regarding that they have to be up to date, or at least on some type of a payment plan where they are at least showing that they're. Paying for their taxes, whether it be business ta- pro- property taxes, or. Uh, not so much for the, for the business, not for their individuals, but. Um, and then their personal property taxes, so if they have trucks or property that they pay pa- taxes on through their business. Those are the things that concerns her, so I'd like both of you to give it some thought. And we can discuss this and put it on the next agenda as well. Um, and I also will be getting see, some feedback from our, um, CCM members. And also legal counsel, just to say if other towns do anything like this.
Uh, how often does this rise that it's an issue?
It's been a huge problem in the past.
Last spring it was. I would say we had three to four phone calls every week.
We had one particular vendor who was chronically, uh, late on taxes.
And Suzanne has done such a fantastic job of cleaning up the books and really, um. Paying attention to these kinds of things that, um. May not have been in the past, and I wanna do everything, I, I would like to do everything to support her office, so that she feels, um. That things are on the right track forward, um. And maybe we sit down and have a conversation with them and, and explain our concerns. I mean, that's another way we can take it too, but, um.
If you could also ask legal counsel, if we pursue this, this track, um. Can there be a cutoff date, like if your taxes are more than two years overdue? Uh, then you are prohibited without further hearing of doing business with the town.
Okay.
We'll give them, yeah, maybe a two-year period where they can negotiate and have a payment plan and what have you, but.
So if they wanted to bid on a project, they would be excluded by virtue of, yeah, that was.
It was taxes for two years now, and they're, you know. They can't do business with the town.
Yeah, that was my, my first thought on that was if we have a, if we have a bid and it's going out to bid. We can't. Seems c- counterproductive to accept a bid, you know, if somebody wins the bid and then we find out that it's someone that's delinquent.
We have a clause.
To go to the next party, it would just take, be too time consuming and counterproductive.
We do have a clause in our in our bid policy that talks about the fact that the town can, um, refuse a bid if it's in the best interest of the town.
Also, when you're doing your due diligence, you would, that would come out.
Yeah.
Pretty quickly, that someone is.
Right, but I mean, if we had the, more. Involved policy that said. Referenced your, you know, two-year cutoff, that we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be a judgment on.
We could.
The better men of the town, it would, it would be very black and white as to who can.
We could add a clause to the bid policy, and, and we would have to put it into the bid policy, I think that it, that's in all bids.
Right.
That they are up to date, their taxes in this particular town, so I can ask that.
You have to just get counsel to. Let us know if, you know, we're good legal ground, and then do that.
And determine what our, what our.
What the parameters are.
Parameters are.
What we can.
Okay.
What we can and can't do.
Anything else on that from anybody? So I'll gather more information, and we probably won't get to discuss this till. January, cause I'm guessing I'm not gonna get answers back as quickly as we'd like for next week. So the next one is chapter forty-one, elections and meetings, and it was brought to my attention by, um. Our registrars that this ordinance is out of date, because the Secretary of State has also approved. The meeting hall as a voting place for early elections. And possibly, and for referendums, so Jen, uh, Datum offered to get me information today. Some past history of when they put the application in to use town, the, the meeting hall. Just so that we have it for reference, and that we could put it into the ordinance saying that, and, uh, it was approved by the state. On a certain particular date, and then add that to this, and of course, you know that there'll be a lawyer that needs to legally split the. Language, but I think for one quick thing, and I think this, we could probably get this done and have this ready to go to town meeting in January. Cause I think it's pretty simple. I sent it to you.
Yeah, I know, I read it before, but.
It just is gonna add an additional.
That's a no-brainer, I mean, we've had them here, so.
Yeah. We just need to legalize it, so I'll work with Jen on that and, um, get that going, and then the last thing on our agenda for tonight. Is, um, our Public Works, um, agreement, they have ratified this contract, they have voted on it. They had to wait until they did, um, to get it to you, so that we vote on it, and then it becomes ratified and I sign off on it. Um. This process was lengthy, we started in early, early in the summer, um. We, the, um. Public Works employees asked that they have their rep, um. Attend meetings, which hadn't been done in the past, but it was because we told them that they could caucus, and they weren't sure what caucus was. So they asked for their rep, and their rep started coming, he was, um. Little difficult to, um, work with at the beginning, so we did pull in our, our labor attorney to help us out. And, um, we went through and they accepted. Ninety-five percent of our proposals, and, um, we have this said contract. Um, there is, uh, I, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on it. Um, but Anita, it, the team was Anita Mancini was on there, so that she made sure all the financials met the current budget. Um, we started with Jill, Jill Karenberg, who was our HR person at, at the beginning. And then when Jill resigned in the beginning of September, we had a lull, but Jamie, um. McLensky came in for the last two, basically as an observer, not so much to do, and we were at that point, we were already at the end. Where we were just finalizing tweaking language, um, so we negotiated this through. And we also always, when we're negotiating, we always make sure that we are in. Compliance with the other contracts that we have for the police department, so trying to make sure that we match as much as possible. And also keep our, um, employees' handbooks as closest possible to both contracts. So all of that has been taken care of and gone through.
My impression is it's a solid contract on all the. The raises seem, you know, reasonable and in line with everything else, and. I'm guessing this brings us into kind of like the middle zone in terms of what other towns offer. Uh.
Yeah, we weren't at the bottom.
Right, so it makes us competitive, but we're not, you know. Overly generous with it, so seems like a reasonable.
Yeah, that, that was, I mean, it looks like it's, you know, three, three percent, three percent, three percent, I was a little. Little surprised that they retroacted, but, um, I, I, you know, it's understandable. I might, that was my question, is where we fall with other, uh, lake towns? So for, if we're in the middle, then that's. Pretty good.
Yeah, they had provided us some, um. Wages from some other towns that were much larger than ours, and we went back out and got those, the, from around ten years.
And we have this properly budgeted for this year.
Yep.
And next year, I'm guessing, right, this is all been already.
Yes.
We foresaw this kind of range.
Yep.
What, what was the, the holdup? Was it more of the, the medical and dental changes or?
Um, they. I'm not sure how much I can say as far as, um, negotiations, cause it isn't. Signed yet, but afterwards I can, yes, it always comes down to wages and benefits, it always comes down to wages and benefits. So, yeah, those were our last.
There wasn't much else changed in there, so.
No, we gave, um, an increase to, um, whoever fills in for Ed, because I think it was at thirty-five dollars a day. Moved it up to seventy-five, because it's a lot of responsibility, um, yes. And, um, I think we changed something about funeral leave and also about boots. Boots.
Safety equipment.
Safety equipment, their personal protective equipment. So I need a motion if we are to ratify, uh, agree to this contract so that I can sign it and get it, then by the way, we didn't. Spend the money to have the lawyer do a full re- beautiful rewrite until it was done, because I thought I'd just wait, so that's, he just sent me the red line.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Old Lime and Public Works employees, the local thirteen oh three. The contract period, July twenty twenty-five to June twenty twenty-nine.
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor of accepting, uh, uh, agreeing to the contract for, um. The Public Works employees, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, now I just need a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in agreement, and it is six thirteen.